Okay, we are live. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Lunenburg Select Board Meeting of Tuesday, February 16th, 2021. In accordance with the requirements of the Open Meeting Law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. Town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent its spread. All town facilities are open and by appointment only. In accordance with the Governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. This meeting will be broadcast live through Local Access Cable, on Facebook Live, on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be able to be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours of its completion. For those who wish to participate in this meeting, if you have a computer, a tablet, or any other smartphone or smart device, you can download and use the Zoom application. Tonight's meeting is meeting ID 9091740347. If you would like to join but do not have a smart device and wish to join from a telephone, please dial 888-475-4499. And once again, the webinar ID is 9091740347. If you would wish to speak at this meeting, if you are on the Zoom application, please familiarize yourself with the "Raise Your Hand" feature in the application somewhere. It differs depending on what kind of device you're using. And if you're on the telephone, you can raise your hand by dialing or pressing *9. I will see as the host that your hand is raised, and then we'll call you at the appropriate time. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting, and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion, to the extent permitted by Open Meeting Law. One last final protocol, if I would hand it over to Ms. Adams for the flag and the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Okay, here we are. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I guess I'm supposed to, I got this part, I'm supposed to open this meeting with a roll call because we're on Zoom, so I will call out your name just to make sure you can hear us and we can hear you. So, Mr. Dwyer.
Present.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Oh, Mr. Jeffries.
I'm here.
And I, as Chair, am here. Mr. Marino will not be joining us this evening. We do not have the Town Managers on vacation, and we have our Executive Assistant, Elaine Peterson, with us. So Elaine, thank you for joining us. Okay, so, first, any public comment from the Board this evening? Seeing no hands raised and no hands waving, any public comment from the public this evening? Okay. Announcements, I have two announcements. First of all, regarding cable, Channel 8 broadcasts of public meetings lately, there has been an issue of late with the way we are broadcasting our signals from the Zoom meeting onto Facebook Live and onto Channel 8. And part of that stream, that video stream, has had intermittent issues. So I know you viewers at home have mentioned that. They are doing their best to resolve it. They thought they had it resolved, but it has crept up again. So they are still working with the company who provides the hardware and the service that streams our video to resolve it. So just be aware that it is still potentially, we are live now, but it potentially could have problems. And again, the people at Packer are doing the best with our vendors to resolve the problem. Announcement number two, tomorrow night, there may be a meeting of interest that the Conservation Commission is having a meeting tomorrow night, February 17th, at 7:00 PM on Zoom. And this meeting will have, as one of its large agenda items, will be a public hearing of sorts. It's not an official legal public hearing, but it's a hearing for the public to review the proposed land use policy modifications that the Conservation Commission is offering. So, one of the things that has been most discussed on their meetings and on social media recently is the inclusion of hunting with firearms that they are proposing on several parcels of the conservation land. So that has caused a lot of discussion. So that will be up tomorrow night to be discussed as part of their entire land use policy. So again, tomorrow night at Zoom, Wednesday, the 17th. I don't have the Zoom meeting ID. You can find it on the Town website under agendas, under Government Bodies and Agendas. Okay, we have one appointment, well, not appointments, appointments, but we have one appointments as in positions. So we have joining us, and let me unmute them. We have Lieutenant Thibodeau, and we have a point Reserve Office Appointee Joel Ortega. So in our Google Drive, we have the notice of appointment by the Town Manager that she sent out before she went on vacation, appointing Mr. Ortega to the, as a Reserve Officer in the LPD. And Chief Gamble has presented his recommendation, which I am presuming that the Lieutenant will refer to. So I will hand it over to you, Lieutenant Thibodeau, to make the introduction and take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Alonso. Yes, I do have a letter here written by Chief Gamble about Joel. Joel is a resident of Fitchburg and is currently employed full-time at the Honda Store in Lancaster, Mass., where he has maintained his employment since an internship through his high school back in 2013. Joel graduated from Leominster High Center for Technical Education in 2013, and in 2018, he graduated from Mount Wachusett Community College, obtaining an Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice. Joel is fluent in two languages, English and Spanish, and he has completed the Massachusetts Municipal Police Training Committee Reserve Academy in June of 2020. He has also successfully completed the background investigation, pre-employment physical, and psychological examination. Throughout his background investigation, it was found that Joel is a very dedicated, honest, and well-thought-of person. Joel was described in his background as one of the best humans on the planet. Joel completed an internship with West Minnesota PD, and when we told them that we were hiring him, they all said that they were very jealous. Chief Gamble has spoken extensively with Joel, and he believes that he's a good fit for the Lunenburg Police Department and the community. Through conversations with Joel, he found him to be very polite and professional. Joel will have a bright future with the department, and Chief Gamble was pleased to present him as a candidate for Reserve Police Officer. Thank you for the consideration. Signed, Chief Thomas Gamble.
Thank you. Well, that's a glowing report, so I'm gonna, after you're done potentially being embarrassed by that, I will ask you to present yourself and introduce yourself, Joel.
Hi, my name is Joel Ortega.
Do you have anything to say?
I want to say thank you for the opportunity there, and I can't wait to start working with the Lunenburg Police Department.
Excellent. Does anybody have any questions for either Lieutenant, to the best that he can answer such questions, or for Mr. Ortega himself?
No, I would just be prepared to make a motion unless somebody else has something to say.
Nope, I mean, I will just say one comment, and then we can get to the motion. I have in the past, and I continue to have the utmost respect for the choices that the Police Department, under the several chiefs that I've been lucky enough to serve, that have served for the town during my tenure. And I continue to have that same respect for their opinions and in their research, and I know they choose the best candidates, as you can tell, Mr. Ortega, from the people you've met at the department, that they've chosen very wisely. So I look forward for the same kind of outstanding performance from you as well.
You will. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Ms. Adams.
Sure, and what I'd say, I've been called one of the best humans. I think that's, I've never heard that on a resume. We certainly need good, we need good humans now more than ever. But I would like to make a motion that we ratify the Town Manager's appointment of Police Reserve Officer Joel Ortega.
Do I have a second? We have a second from Mr. Jeffries. Any further discussion?
I just want to thank, I want to thank Mr. Ortega for applying for this position and look forward to him joining the team.
Excellent. Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And an aye for me. So, congratulations. We look forward to hearing about you in glowing terms as you start. When is your start date? Lieutenant, when does he start?
He's starting tomorrow.
He started, he started tomorrow. All right. So, congratulations on that, and we wish you the best of luck here in Lunenburg.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to current business. The approval of minutes of February 2nd, 2021. Everybody should have had them distributed, and if no one has any changes or corrections they'd like to see, I would entertain a motion regarding those minutes.
I would make a motion that we approve the minutes from February 2nd, 2021.
Okay, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Further discussion, roll call vote, Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries. And an aye for me. All right, tooling along here. Warrants. Mr. Jeffries, did you sign the warrants of last Tuesday?
I did.
Okay, in the amount, so it was an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $474,903.35, Mr. Jeffries as Vice Chair signed in my absence as I was on vacation. So thank you for that.
No problem.
Action items. Committee reports.
I have some.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I have something.
Yes, action items.
As far as action items, we talked about this a little bit last week, Chair, during my public comment, and maybe thereafter, looking for a little bit of follow-up meeting about the water district expansion. I know as citizens, we were both at that meeting last Wednesday. The Water Department had a meeting, and on their agenda was expanding the water to the same developer, and they're looking to bring water to the edge of the property where it would be metered off to himself, sort of the, what, exactly what was sort of technically voted against. So, from a municipal perspective, what I really, I think maybe meeting with the Water Department would be necessary, but I also have raised concerns a couple times about the fact that Route 13 is a newly paved road and there's a moratorium. So I think as they continue to push for water to be brought to that location, we need to weigh in as a municipality that there's not just the issue that the Water District voted down that action, which I think should be respected, but also simply, you know, allowing one individual to be able to take up all of these newly paved roads is something I think we should begin to discuss proactively. And so, I really want to see this, the Water District expansion item probably on our agenda, maybe meet with them, and get a better understanding. The community, the residents, they spoke out, are not in favor of the water lines being, I guess, expanded, and it's sort of being brought forward still, even though it was just voted no. So that's something I really want us to be proactive about, in particular discussing the roads.
Sure. So, at your request, the Town Manager to send an invitation to the Water District Superintendent, who has responded, and we have proposed two dates for them to come before us, March 2nd or 9th, and we are waiting for their reply from the Water Commissioners. So we have not heard back which one, if any. I mean, again, it's a courtesy request. We have no authority, but I understand where you're coming from, and I agree that we should meet with them. As far as the, how the water can be run, that's up to them, but where it can be run and the road cuts are obviously up to the town. So it's in everybody's best interest to try to be on the same page. I would agree with that. So, the invitation has been made, and we are just waiting for them to respond about whether they will come, and if so, which date they will come.
Okay, thank you for that date.
And also, I should note that there was no action taken on their, after their meeting of last week either. It was purely a discussion, so there was no, no final or even projected determination. It was just a discussion.
Correct. I just want us to be proactive, you know, as they're working on it.
Any other action items? Okay, committee reports. Any committee reports? No.
Just the one thing that comes to mind, not 100% a committee report, but I saw the emails about a date for the Greenleaf Community Outreach Meeting. Any updates on that?
Yes, it is scheduled, it's on our agenda, so it's scheduled to be March 10th, would be the second Greenleaf, the second Greenleaf Community Outreach Meeting. I should note a couple things. So we're going to try to put this one on our Zoom. So there is no requirement for them to have a second one, and the requirement by all the statutes of everything putting in cannabis storefront, where cannabis business lies on them to have the outreach, which they had. So we're trying to, just, that one, they couldn't, we couldn't stream it because it was their Zoom, and we couldn't stream their Zoom, even if they made us host. That was the problem. There's no requirement that it be streamed, but again, they're working with us, and they are going to try to have this, because they feel it's in everybody's best interest to be on the same page. So they will be doing a similar, if not identical, report on the 10th, March 10th, which is a Wednesday.
Thank you.
Okay, old business. Any discussion of the fiscal year 2022 budget, capital plan, financial forecast, or annual town meeting warrant? I have not heard any updates since last week's budget, budget presentation.
So I did forward over to you, Mr. Chair, and the Town Manager, proposed, I believe I forwarded it to you, but I definitely sent it to the Town Manager, proposed change to the APD bylaw for discussion at a future point. So I don't see it in the Google Drive, so I don't know if we're prepared to talk about it tonight.
No, we're going to try to talk about it next week. I have not gotten a chance to, well, not next week, I guess next week is, we don't have a meeting. But I haven't had a chance to look it over. I did get it while, right before I went on vacation, so I will look at it. It is still in my inbox, and we will make sure that it, Elaine, when is the closing date of the warrant?
March 15th at 4:00 PM.
Okay, so we have, we have time. So, as you and I, as you and I spoke about it at a selectman meeting, I think we were on the same kind of page about, we need to try to introduce some kind of exception other than the stalemate that we find ourselves in. So, although I haven't read yours, depending on what it says, there's a good chance I would be in support of it. And as soon as I read it, well, I'll give it to Elaine to put in a Google Drive the day before, you know, so people can read it, like on a Monday night or a Sunday night, just so they have a few days to read it before the next meeting. I don't want to do it too early, because I don't want people emailing anything just for Open Meeting Law, but we'll send it out.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so, we have, Ms. Adams has indicated she has to leave at 8:00 tonight, so that's 40 minutes. At that point, let's see how far we can get in this workshop, because at 8:00, if we haven't gotten to the end with only three of us, I mean, with Ms. Marino being out, we may want to just table whatever we haven't done, but let's see how far we can go with the four of us. I sent everybody, everybody's responses. Again, it's, you know, on anybody's list, it has never been more than, the current process is eight steps. Nobody had something longer than that, so we should be able to review this and hopefully come up with, you know, agreements. So, what I would, what I would suggest is that we go over the process. Some people put in the process dates as well. What I would say is, let's strip out dates from it initially. Let's just talk about the process, then we can go back and work backwards in the calendar, whatever steps need to be taken and put dates on them at the end, if everybody's okay with that as a framework. Is that okay with everybody?
That works.
Yeah. Okay, so, almost, I'm going to try to spread this out in front of me here, so I can see everybody's at the same time. So I think everybody's basically starts with generating a list. So at some point, we need to generate a list of what, what appointed member terms expire in the upcoming June 30th. And that has traditionally been done by the selectmen or Select Board's office, usually the Executive Assistant, in this case, putting a person to it. Elaine has done that. I would assume we would want to start the same way, correct? We need to start somewhere. So that list would be comprised of the appointed body, the person whose term is expiring, and that's basically it. So, basically a list of those.
No, I would add the length of the term, and, you know, that way we know how long we're appointing people to.
Yes, I think, if I'm not mistaken, yeah, we should, yeah, we should have the length of the term too, yes. Okay, so we can, I'm going to do this in real bite-sized chunks. Is everybody okay with that as a first step?
Yes.
Yep, okay. Then we'd have, across several of these, we have notification. So, in general, it seems like, obviously, I think we would agree that the people whose terms are expiring should be notified, and the chairs of all those, really, by rights, anybody, any appointed body that has more than three members is going to have a member expire every year. So it may just be easier to just send it to all the chairs of all the appointed bodies, and then the individuals as well, whose terms are going to expire.
I would slow that down just a little bit, Mr. Chair. So, I would, I would suggest, prior to reaching out to any kind of board chairs, that we may want to make contact with all those members and first ask if they seek reappointment.
No, no, I know, but this is just, all this next step is, is notification. We're still on notification. That means after we generate the list, we should tell the people themselves that their terms are expiring, if they didn't already know, and we should alert the chairs about, hey, on your committee, this, or commission, this is the people, these are the people who are, whose terms are expiring. We haven't asked anybody to do anything. This is pure notification.
Yeah.
You don't think we should notify them?
Well, what I, what I think is that, what I propose is that the first step would be to reach out to those people, so that way, what I'm looking at is minimizing the workload on our executive assistants. So, rather than, what I would suggest is that we, that we reach out to the people whose terms are going to expire, and then find out if they're seeking reappointment. And then, if, you know, then we can then notify all those chairs, so that way, in that notification, we say, hey, these are the positions that are coming available. Your current member is seeking reappointment, and would you like to provide a recommendation for or against that reappointment? So that way, we can consolidate that communication that comes next.
Mr. Dwyer.
Didn't we just send out a blanket email to all the people who have potential reappointments in the chairs at the same time?
That's what I would suggest, yes, exactly. I mean, we're going to ask, we're going to ask people if they're going to want to, you know, if they're volunteering again for the seats they have. But I mean, the first thing is, that once the Executive Assistant puts together the list, they can email the Select Board, the Town Manager, the Chairs of all the Appointed Committees, I mean, it's just one email blast. It's not going to take any more time or less time than putting everybody, you know, in one, or doing them, we're not going to ask her to do it separately, just going to let everybody know, these are the, these are the positions.
All right, I follow.
Okay. Do we have any objection to that? So we'll make that step two? Okay. So, now, this is where I think there'll be discussion. So what should happen at that point? I mean, I would, I would, again, there's different talks on different places here, that we've asked the people who have had those positions, if they are interested in being reappointed. Now, I know there's an objection to the word "reappointment," but if you have the position, and you're looking to be reappointed, it's just an English word. So, do you want to be considered for the position again, whatever the terminology would be?
I'll step in there, if that's okay.
Sure.
I think, yes, the word "reappointment" would apply to the person reapplying, but I just want to be careful for us to not use that word on the front end of the description to say, oh, we're at our yearly reappointment process. At that, at that level, we should definitely say we're going through our appointment process. One of the options would be that a member may be reappointed.
Yeah, I have no objection to that. We can call it our appointment policy, sure.
Okay. But yes, sometimes appointment will be very appropriate.
Okay. So, at this point, I think we should ask those people who, whose terms are expiring, whether they have interest in being considered for the next term. And they should, they need to do that in writing, and that writing could be electronic writing, or it could be a paper writing, it doesn't matter. We can allow for both, but you have to let some, well, who would they let know? I would assume they should, they should alert their chair, and then they should alert the Select Board, correct?
I agree with that.
I don't know if alerting the chair is necessary, but I would say the Select Board.
Okay. So at least the Select Board, yeah. It would be a courtesy to the chair, but since the chair doesn't appoint them, yeah, I guess they don't have to. Okay, now, this is the, this is the next part, and this is, I think, probably going to generate some discussion. So, now we have to make these, this is all behind the scenes. Now we have to make these known to the public, that these positions are expiring. That in and of itself, I think, is kind of a common thread to everybody, is that they have to be made public. The real question is, do we indicate in that list that somebody in those positions are seeking, without mentioning names or anything, that there's somebody seeking reappointment for those positions? And the reason I just bring that up as a subject, is if, I think a lot of people don't, and I don't want to speak for everybody, that's why, I mean, there have been applicants in the past who have said, I'm not interested in, you know, an adversarial or competitive interview, where somebody has a position, and I'm trying to basically unseat them, recognizing that they have no, they've claimed to the seat. I think people realize that, but they just don't want to do that, where they may feel like, number one, they're going to be, people are going to hear them in an interview, and historically, people running for, again, to be appointed in the same position they just held, And historically, people running for, again, to be appointed in the same position they just held, uh, they just, and a large percentage, they just get appointed again because they have experience and it's hard to overcome that. The other option is, we don't say that people are up for reappointment and that everybody, it's just, you know, people find that out at the last minute. So the real question is, when we publicize these positions on the town website and in the newspaper, do we list that somebody is looking to be reappointed to there or not? And then I'll just open that up. Ms. Adams.
Um, I think listing it makes sense, um, because the, it, it, it gives people the understanding of whether or not they're filling a vacancy or if they're going through a, um, a process. I think that would be helpful.
Okay. Mr. Dwyer.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chair. Um, I think we absolutely announced that the, to the public that the reappointment process is gonna happen. Cause that way we can solicit comments from the public for people who have, you know, the observant of whatever board or committee members being reappointed and can provide their, their feedback to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, I, I would, uh, I agree with Selectman Adams. I think that we should, the published list should indicate if there's a person filling that position that's seeking reappointment.
Okay, wow, alright. I like it. In unanimity, if that's, uh, okay, so that's the next step. Yes, Ms. Adams.
I also liked, um, what, um, selectmen, uh, member, I don't know what word to use. We say selectmen, but we, member Dwyer, like, I don't know what our
Select board member, I think is the actual term.
It's so long, select board member Dwyer, um, um, the, the idea of having the public input, and that's probably, you know, that's, you know, coming up in the steps, but um, I do think soliciting information, um, you know, will help make it such a healthy process, and it doesn't necessarily mean that it's even gonna be negative input, you know, to the contrary. We might have an opportunity to get a lot of positive input and just, um, so yeah, getting public input, uh, a chance, a night where we seek public input, I think would be nice.
Okay. Uh, and I agree. I think that getting people's input positive or otherwise, uh, is good. So then we publish it in the paper, and I think, does everybody agree it should be, Mr. Dwyer, sorry?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chair. Um, where you were going, publish in the paper, I, I think it's fine. And reading through the, the steps that we had for, with the other members, I think where I diverge from them is, um, I think that we should solicit input from the boards where these members have been working, cause the board, you know, those boards are the ones who have the best knowledge of, of, uh, the performance of the people who've been working there for the most part. Um, so I think that, that's very valuable. I disagree, and where I disagree, I think, in the process with, with the other members, maybe, I, I don't know that we should necessarily open it up to, you know, performance of, uh, or these open seats or reappointments to other people. I said, I, I think we take the performance of the member up or down based on recommendation of, of the board and recommendation from the public. Uh, any solicitation, and, and then if we reappoint them, great. If we don't, then we have a vacancy.
Ms. Adams, Ms. Adams, you found the, raise your, raise your hand, alright.
I did, I, um, it, so, the, I paused for a long time to think about the, um, part where, um, uh, Mr. Dwyer was, um, recommending soliciting the input from the board, because sometimes you end up with, um, oh, like when I served on Charter Review Committee and I was a lone dissenter, and I had a lot of stress in my life at those meetings, and I, there was a couple of things I really held on to. By the time we had our public meeting, um, it, it, it went in the direction of, of which I had been dissenting. Um, and so the board might have one lens on a person, but it might not be the lens of the community or the lens of everybody, so it's just, it's, I, I don't, I don't know if, 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 if getting the up or down from the group really helps the process and the vacancy, because I feel like it just supports potentially business as usual in a way that's harder for new people to contribute. Um, I think my best example that I come to mind with in terms of people wanting to keep their seats and they have the experience and therefore maybe be deemed the best option is I have this, you know, like, what's a hypothetical? Somebody moves to Lunenburg and they served on conservation um, in Groton or another community for twenty years, and they really wanna contribute to this community. They may have just as much experience, maybe more, maybe a, a deeper background. Um, so just having held a seat, I, I, I just don't want that to become something where we've seen, um, it's hard for new people to know when and how to participate. I think it's nice to think of the um, vacancies as an opportunity for participation and to show that they do not belong to people.
Mr., Mr. Dwyer?
By the way, I've lost my raise a hand button.
Uh, go, go ahead, Michael, Michael Ray. Okay, well, I, I guess my response is, cause, cause I understand reading through uh, uh, the other plans, that many people were open to having, uh, you know, uh, other people um, participate in the appointment process, other potential candidates. And I guess one of the things I thought is, um, would anyone be open to, you know, term limits on appoint, appointments? So we kinda, that accomplishes the, um, turnover in the board, so we kinda get fresh pieces. But, you know, maybe we say, okay, you're limited, you're limited to three or four consecutive terms or something like that before you have to step off. Just a thought.
So, I'll, I'll answer that question. I, I am strongly against, and I always have been strongly against term limits of any kind at any level, so.
Yeah, I, I think it's a little different, though, when it's, it's, um, for appointed bodies. You know, i- if for elected officials, we're, we're term limited, term limited by the voters. If they vote us in, great. But for people who are appointed, you know, to me, I think a term limit could, could be a good avenue, but
I know, I
Just a thought throughout.
Arguments, I know the arguments for it. I'm just, I'm just telling you, you asked the question openly, and I'm just answering the question openly. Uh, Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, I just have a question for Mr. Dwyer. So from, what you're saying is, are, just so I'm understanding you correctly, are you recommending that the boards provide kind of an up or down about whether that person should be reappointed, and then we should then make a decision on that prior to advertising the position? Is, is that?
No, I, I, I think the up or down vote should be provided, provided to the select board as well as, you know, what that was the vote unanimous, was it split? And that information should be provided to the select board, uh, as we consider that information as well as, you know, public comment.
Alright. I, I would be in favor of soliciting, not from the whole board. I think that that when you have multi-member bodies, that there, people disagree, and that, you know, why someone may want someone on the board or not, that I think we just, I'm not, so, I don't know if, if all that information would be helpful to me for the reappointment process, but what would be helpful is if I had a response from the chair or vice chair of the chairs up for appointment from each committee, just indicating generally, you know, what their thoughts, um, are about the appointment. I would imagine that most chairs would bring the question back to the board and pose it to them, um, as I think is maybe the recommended approach, but I don't know if, I think it should be optional, and, and I think that whatever a board chair has to contribute, I think is, is for me would be sufficient. But I think that what I'd be looking for is kinda like, is how, how well do you work with this person? Um, you know, i- you know, they saw, do they attend meetings? And I think a board chair would provide that type of response that says, you know, their attendance is poor, you know, they're not always participatory, they, they don't seem to read, read material prior to meeting. All those questions, I think a board chair would provide that, and those are the things I wanna know for appointments.
Ms. Adams.
Okay, um, first I'll start with, um, Mr. Jeffries. The raise the hand moved, and somebody told me about it last time. It used to be in the participants area. Now, if you go to your reactions and click on the reaction emoji, your raise the hand option is there.
Got it.
I was lost for a couple of weeks and I just remembered.
For some reason, my, my raised hand is actually a brown hand. It's interesting.
Big brother is a, 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 alive and well.
Um, mine's yellow. So term limits, um, uh, came up at Charter Review, um, in terms of, and I think it plays into what we're trying to accomplish here, which is making sure that something's not looked at, kept us too long, or somebody has overstayed their welcome. And one of the things that came up in the Charter Review process regarding terms is that sometimes participation is so difficult. And some things are so hard to fill that we didn't wanna make any limitations to that. We didn't wanna make a rule that would maybe take the only candidate out of the running. Um, and make it even harder to, to fill spots. On the other hand, I think there's just times where you wanna make sure that terms can be shifted or changed. And it doesn't mean somebody can't come back and reapply in the following year, but, um, there's just been, I feel like for the few years that I was involved, um, the list comes out, we say reappoint, and it's just done. There wasn't any real discussion or any real opportunity for change. And so I think anything we do is going to improve the process. Um, and then, um, the other thing I was thinking as we were talking about input from the boards and committees themselves versus public input, I think public input is the most important part of this potential process because they can't vote. And so if somebody's had a really bad experience, um, with a board, an appointed board or committee, or they really have had trouble being heard, they can't vote an individual out. So I feel like the public really needs an opportunity to potentially share their experiences, um, to the people appointing in lieu of the fact they'll never be able to have a vote. Their only say will be through voicing something to, um, the select board.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna rein this in, cause we got a bunch of subjects on the table here. So let's, 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 uh, do them one by one. So the first one is, if I heard you correctly, Mr. Dwyer, was you wanted to be able, you wanted to get a vote of the body that they're on, if they're interested in being reappointed. And you wanted them to vote and provide that vote to the board, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I would say that I am for a modified version of that. I, I don't, I've been on appointed bodies as well, and I don't know that I'd be terribly happy or comfortable voting whether I think a fellow member should, should be appointed again by the select board. But I would be happy to have the avenue to provide input if I so chose. But in a formal vote, I think it puts people, it may put people on the spot, and I don't know you're necessarily gonna get an honest tally of what you're looking for. I think if you open it up and say, you know, that, we, we'd like, we, we encourage the committee through the chair or individually to provide input to the board. But I would, and, and that's the wording I would use, I would encourage input from the board. Um, but I would not incur, I would not make it mandatory to make a vote, because I think it just puts people at a, in a very strange position, especially for an appointed position. That's, I'll leave it up. Ms. Adams.
I agree with your modification. I think it would be great to get input from, um, to solicit input from the border committee. Um, but the vote then, not only does it create some stress for the actual committee, but then it creates an unusual circumstance for the appointing authority, who would be the select board, would either be going with or against the border committee. So it creates this, um, unnecessary confrontational moment because the appointing authority belongs to the select board. So seeking a vote from somebody else is, uh, uh, seems a little bit too much.
So you'd like to solicit the opinion of, or a letter from the chair as, as has been alluded to from, from Michael Ray, and then whoever else in the committee wants to provide their input can do so.
Yep.
Yeah, I would not even say necessarily a collective input, but where we're going out with advertising the information about the vacancies, um, then I think we say, and submit input in such, in such a way, you know, whether you're from the public or from the board, just let people know we, we welcome any input, um, to be submitted by such and such a date. Something a little bit more generic.
In the past, when people have had vacancies, I know, like, you know, I think it's all over the place as far as how appointed bodies have treated new members coming on. So I know in, in recent years, the Council on Aging has, has shown up in almost solidarity when they, when appointments come up for them, whether it's a new person or reappointment, and they'll give the chair, whoever's the chair at the time, will give their, you know, recommendation or, or not. So, you know, some bodies don't choose not to do that. I mean, did they all, I wanna leave it available to them to choose the avenue that they feel is best for them. If, if they want the chair to speak for them, or they wanna speak for themselves, I think we should leave it open to that. I'm just, uh, I just think we should encourage input of some kind without mandating a vote. I guess that's
Um, I, I, I'm, I'm fine with that modification, and I, I guess kinda following it that to its logical conclusion, if, if we solicit input and, or open input from boards, and they don't provide any, that's also telling as well.
That, exactly, exactly my point, right. So they, they can actually show by not providing anything that says something, yes. So are we all okay with that particular slice?
I think so, but would you mind just summarizing that?
So, we're gonna ask the board, when the list, when the list is done, and every, we know who's running, we're gonna ask for those people running for, uh, appointments. Now, in my, in my streamline and my procedure, this is also gonna apply to people who are applying too, is that they're going to, I, I want them to meet with the boards, but that's not, I'm getting ahead of myself. What we just discussed is that people wishing to seek reappointment, we encourage their, their current committee and the chair to provide input to the select board regarding their reappointment. That's what we just decided.
Sounds great.
Now, what I also heard Mr. Dwyer say in his last previous thing was that he wanted us to, to consider appointing the reappointments without publishing them to the public. And how, did, no?
We, we should publish them to the public.
Okay.
But I don't think we should solicit, if we, we have a, a re- reappointment, and that um, potential reappointment has expressed interest in their reappointment, I think we consider that person on their own. And if we, so we give them up or down vote.
You want, and, so I wa- I, so I didn't have it misconstrued, I may have missaid it. You want us to entertain their reappointment before we would entertain any other interviewees?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not in favor of that.
I, I personally would not be in favor of that either. I think it's gotta be an open process. And as long as we're telling people that there's a person up for reappointment, if they choose to be interviewed, I think we should interview them, because as Katie said, you know, there could be a chance that somebody has come in and has made themselves available, that has incredible amounts of experience that we wouldn't want to, you know, miss out on. And it is the one time that the public gets to introduce themselves. So even if the person doesn't get appointed, the new person, first of all, I think we should hear them, but even if they don't get reappointed, at least they, they'll make themselves known. So the next time they come around, we know, we know that they were interested last time too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, um, in agreement with, um, the fact that it, it should all happen at the same time. I, I think, um, it, it's very exclusionary to give the, the person who has had the seat um, an opportunity above somebody else trying to be heard. So I think doing it all at once, I think in a lot of circumstances, because participation can be low, we will probably see a lot of reappointments. On the other hand, on, um, you know, on, on committees, like Conservation Committee is a good example, they've had a lot of, a lot of topics that have come before them that get the community really engaged in, in participating, trying to be heard, like with the hunting, um, on the, um, conservation land topic. But it's, it's, i- if, if people want to participate and join in, they can't just do what we did as select board members and run for it. And so I think having that open process at the same time, a reappointment versus a new appointment happening at the same time, A reappointment versus a new appointment happening at the same time. Creates a level playing field for people that feel like they want to engage. And I think that's to me. Why for several years we've talked about this, improving this process is so that it will improve. The ability for somebody to access involvement.
Okay, so it sounds like there's three, uh, in this case, so. Even if Mr. Marino was here tonight, I think that would be. We voted, that would be probably the presiding or the prevailing case here. So I think we should entertain them all at the same time. Okay, so the next part is anything that's publicized that people aren't reappointing and there's a new person who wants to apply. I think there's probably no disagreement on this. They have to fill out a talent bank form and submit it to the select board's office. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's pretty straightforward.
I have, excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Adams.
I have an aside there, no problem with that process, but is there any, um. Anybody feel open to changing the name of the talent bank form? I think of like, like tap dancing and piano playing and if it was like. You know, and so you hear, oh, do you fill out a talent thing for it? Oh, I'm not very talented. If, if, if it was a participation form or an involvement form, I don't know what the right word is because every time I hear talent bank form, I think that's a. A funny name, um, and it might help people know that what we're looking for if we retitle that.
How about a committee interest form?
Something like that. I like, yeah.
I mean, I, I, I agree. I think talent bank, yeah, that the same. Same images come to mind, and I wish some of them actually did have some dancing skills or something. It would make the interviews much more entertaining, but. But yeah, I mean, we, we can talk about that. That's, that's something we could do in the night. Yeah. All right, so we have those forms, whatever those forms are, we have those, we have people up for reappointment. The next thing that I had, I don't know if anybody else had, is that I, I want new. I want people who are new to be able to go to at least one meeting of the body they wish to join. And meet with them, like meet with that committee and talk with them. Just so they get to know them and hear their qualifications. How? Otherwise, how can that committee or its chair submit any, you know, a- any input? If they don't even meet the person, if they just read it on paper. So I would like them to first go, obviously, if you're up for a reappointment, that's not necessary, but. If you're up, if, if you're a new person and you want to be new to this body, I think you should go to one of their meetings. How does anybody feel about that?
I think that should be encouraged but not required.
Ms. Adams.
I totally agree that it would be great to say we recommend, but I think it's a difficult requirement. Um, especially if that board has been frustrating to them. And they say, I'm gonna join, I'd like to bring change. Um, they. They really need to engage with the appointing authority. And I think if they come to us and say, well, I've never been to a meeting, I'd say, oh, hmm, maybe you should. And that might go against them. I think it behooves anybody to get involved ahead of time. And it could be recommended, but I think that would just come down to one of the first questions that would be good to ask. Have you been attending? Conservation meetings. So I think it's a good recommendation, but not necessarily.
Encouraged but not required. Mr. Dwyer.
Uh, I agree with the encouraged but not required, and frankly, a- a- as soon as we let any, uh, potential applicant. Know that they're going to be considered. Um, then I think we should inform them that, that they're encouraged to attend, you know, as many meetings of whatever particular. Uh, board they're on, or they're tr- trying to become a part of, uh, as many as possible.
Okay. All right. So I think we're in agreement that encourage but not require them to meet with the board, the, the body. Municipal body they wish to be appointed to. Okay. But it's not a requirement. Um, okay, so now we have all of them. I guess the next step is scheduling them. So they all should be scheduled for the select board and has to be the first two weeks in June. So I think, again, I didn't want to get involved in dates, but that's when, I, I think that's probably a known date because we have to do it. By the end of June, so either the first two weeks or the second and third week, meeting in June.
I think we should target the first, but, uh, as is the case, you know, it may, may happen that it's the second or the third.
Right, okay. And that's all we have to do is we have to work with them, and I guess that's going to be through. The executive assistant again will work to schedule those meetings. Do you concur? I mean, you're doing that already, Elaine, right?
Yes.
All right, so that's good. Um, and I think we need, we need it to the. To the best. Of our abilities, we need, if, if there are seats that are contested, that there's more than one. We want to see them on the same evening. I'd rather not have them split if we, if we can avoid it. I mean, sometimes people's schedules may make that impossible, but if, if at all we can avoid it. Things that are contested should, we should meet both or multiple applicants in the same meeting, so that it's all fresh in our mind.
Okay. And.
Yes.
Oh, we have multiple hands.
Mr. Jeffries.
So to, um, and Mr. Chair, if I may ask, um, Elaine, since she's here with us, we can take advantage of this. Um, just, you know, in, in your, in, in the process of you reaching out to, um, people for the appointment process. You know, do you have anything, is there anything that you've observed that we should be taking into account? Is there something that we haven't talked about that we should be thinking about based on your experience?
Are you talking about the reappointment process?
Yeah, reaching out to boards. Yeah, yes.
Um, I think all of you have take, I think if you, if we took a little bit from all of your suggestions, it would make a perfect. Process. I was looking at the different, um. Process suggestions and some I liked, some I said, oh, that's not gonna work, um. But so far you're doing a good job, so.
All right, we're got, we're hitting, we're hitting Elaine's perfect. That was, that was a great prompt, Mr. Jeffries. I like it. Maybe you should quit while we're ahead. Ms. Adams.
Um, I think as far as scheduling, what I imagine is it would be great to do it all in one night. But if we have, um, two seats and, and, you know, seven applicants for those two seats. Um, then I think we can highlight that as its own, pu- put that on a separate night. I think it'll just be, each year will be different. The goal can be to, to do it, um. All together, but if there's an outlier and it's looking like we need more time to go through something. Um, then we, you know, could split it and just have, have, have that one committee on a, on a its own.
I think we're gonna have to play it by year. I think every year it's gonna be different depending on how many applications and how many interviews we have to do.
And Todd suggested what co- committee involvement form?
Yeah, I, that was actually, uh, I texted it to you. I thought that might be a good title for committee involvement form.
I like the, the, the name. All of a sudden I'm thinking too, should we have a talent show? I have been practicing the piano for a couple of years, so I could bring that along.
But you're an elected p- a person, you're not going to be appointed, so. You have to wait till you're a, you're up for an appointed body, then we'll ask you to play the piano.
Okay.
Okay, uh. Everybody is familiar with their own. Did we not, Mr. Dwyer?
Um, I guess one thing I'm thinking about is i- if we run into a situation in, in the future. Um, where we have a, a board that has multiple appointments. So you have two or three appointments for the same board and you have multiple applicants as, as, uh. Member Adams, uh, indicated, so say we had six, six for three slots. I think the order you take them is, is important. Do you take the, the potential reappointments first? And then if we vote and say, one out of the three, then we pick from the last, last three, the last two slots. Um, because I, whoever goes first, uh, I don't know. I, I think that's. You have more of an advantage if you're going first in your vote for reappointment than if you're the last.
That's an excellent point. There was, um, two openings, you were there.
There was actually, it happened to me. There were three, three openings and there was four, four people. Yeah.
And the order did matter, and I was becoming very anxious about it as it was happening because. It, you could almost see it playing out while it was happening, that the, the, it was disadvantaged as you went along. The order i- it all happened in, so.
I think, I think you maybe both ta- I mean, unless I'm mistaken, because I think I know what you're talking about, Ms. Adams, and. What I, what Mr. Dwyer is talking about is the interview order, but you're talking about the way that.
No, I, I, I'm talking about the, the select board vote order.
Okay.
So i- 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 if you have a, a new person and the select board considers them first for one of the openings and say, even if it's, you know. Uh, you know, one open slot and there's two people, whoever you vote on first, I think has the, has an advantage. Uh, so who do we want to give that advantage?
I've seen votes, I've seen people voted down. I mean, e- even on the first vote. Ms. Adams.
No, I think there's something really important here, um, in the order that it's done because. Um, I'm wondering if it makes sense to say there's two openings and have. I, I, it's just, yeah, I'm, I'm a little bit paused here because I, there's this one night where we were. Making all these appointments and as it got towards the end, it became, um. It became stressful because the order dictated who got picked, not necessarily. Each person wasn't taken into consideration for the three, the order started to determine the outcome.
Yeah, I mean, if, I mean, if you have more than one person, if there's more people than there are slots open. Then you have, somebody's gotta make a motion to nominate somebody. I mean, that's just, I, I don't know of any way around that. It may be uncomfortable, it may be uncomfortable for the. Select board, it may be uncomfortable for the people applying, but I don't know of any other better method.
Yeah, my, my thoughts, I mean, I remember the, the night in question, um, although my recollection is that by the. Was that when there, that there was one nomination that didn't receive a second? And so I, I mean, I think that the board was pretty much in agreement on who to appoint. But I think that, I think that that's what I, I think that in the process, we should interview. If we're interviewing, we should interview everyone interested in that position. And then, you know, I don't, I don't know if it matters, the order of the interview, and I think that it's up to the board members at that time to make appointments. I mean, after you've had six people in front of you, to me, you, you kind of make up your mind about who you'd like to appoint or not. And, you know, it doesn't, to me, it makes no difference, um, the order in which you go about doing that. I think it's, you know. It, it's whoever gets the most support first, right?
Anybody, any, exactly. I mean, it's, it's uncomfortable to a lot of people because the people, these are your fellow townspeople. And they're in the audience generally and they haven't left. But it's, if anybody's ever had to hire somebody for a job and you have one job opening, you got five applicants, I mean, eventually you have to pick one. And if it's a committee that's picking them, you have the same thing. I mean, somebody's gonna put somebody's name forward. It's just. It's just a matter of filling seats. I, I don't know that there's any better or worse way of doing it. I mean, uh, Mr. Jeffries said, I think by the end of the interviews, any one of us as an individual probably know. Who they would like to see on there, depending on the, on the interviews, and who they would, you know, rank lower. Not that they wouldn't want to see them, but there's better people, so I don't know if there's a better way to do that, uh, on all ears.
I don't know if there is.
I'm not sure if there's a better way, but.
Well, we can think about it. I mean, there, the, the only other way is, of course, you can, you can say to everybody, hey, there's four members. Put them in the order you want them, and then we can calculate them, so that. I've, I've suggested that in the past, and I think it's very rarely chosen because nobody likes to do impromptu. Voting that way, so. What?
I said ranked choice appointments?
But basically, well, it's not, we wouldn't follow the exact rank choice, but it is a, a form of it. It's not the ranked choice that we just voted on the ballot, but. You would rank them and everybody would get numbers from like one, you know, four. For first place down to let's say four people for two seats. You, you put them in the order and whoever you put first got four points and. The second one would be a three, two, one and never, then you just total up the points and then you would just, that's how you'd assign people. So you could do that, but.
You, you know, my own feeling is that if people are going for a reappointment, we take. Those candidates for reappointment for first and give them a vote, yea or nay. And then if one fails, then we go to the pool of candidates that we have to fill the opening.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't have any, I mean, I don't have any real objection to that. I think anyway, anything that comes up, any process we use. There'll be some arguments against it, so. Mr. Jeffries.
Yeah, I mean, I think that I just would want to avoid. As I look at the way that we're looking at this process and I recall kind of, you know, last year. Selectman Adams bringing this up, and then the year before that as well, Selectman Adams bringing it up, and I, and I think her and I have been in agreement that. That we don't want to, while it's understandable that members may show preference for people who are currently holding positions. But I don't think that we want to build in that preference for people, um, who are currently holding positions.
All right, I want to take this pause because I know Ms. Adams said she had to leave it at eight. Um. I'm gonna ask the, the other three, do, do we want to table this until we get the other two members back? And if so, I will write up what we have come to this far, thus far. And I will try even potentially to maybe take a stab at, at the end of it, which, because I think we're at the end of it, how do we make the appointments? And then we can distribute it and talk about the exact wording and then put calendar dates in. Is, is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, okay, so we will, we will call this, uh, at a halt here. Um, let's, let me get back where my agenda was, just to round out the meeting. So, uh, our next meeting is March 2nd. We do not have a meeting next week. March 2nd is the next one. Uh, as I said before, March 10th is the next Greenleaf Community Outreach Meeting, which is on a Wednesday. Any public comment from the public? Seeing none, any public comment from the board? Seeing none. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
We have a second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Ms. Adams?
Hi.
Mr. Dwyer.
Hi.
Mr. Jeffries.
Hi.
And an eye for me. Good night, everyone. Take care of yourselves, take care of each other. See you next week. Sorry, two weeks. Bye.
Bye bye.